So the first order of business is the approval of the agenda. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda? Brian?
Motion to approve the agenda.
Moved by Brian, is there a second?
I'll second.
By Dan. Questions? All in favor, raise your hand. Five in favor, the student rep in favor. The agenda is approved. Public comment? Let's see any public here.
Public.
Okay. Moving right along. Motion to approve the December 5th, 2018 regular minutes. Brian?
Motion to approve the minutes from December 5th, 2018.
Second?
I'll second.
Second by Michael. I saw just one spell. I think Senator Hassan is H-A-S-S-A-N, right?
Yep.
So that's in the Student Senate report. So just, because she met with you, writers. She met, yeah. Other corrections? Hearing none. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Five in favor, the student rep in favor. We have a motion to approve the non-public minutes. Brian?
Motion to approve the non-public minutes.
Moved by Brian, second by?
I'll second.
Michael? Corrections? Hearing none. All in favor, please raise your hand. Five in favor. The non-public minutes are approved. We have announcements, comments, and accommodations from the district. None? Okay. From the board? Moving right along. Moving right along. The district reports, assistant superintendent? No.
Wow.
You know, it's not kind of record. Superintendent's report?
Oh, I gotta break the record, sorry. I would normally rely on Denise to do this, but since she's absent tonight, if you haven't had a chance to attend the music concerts in the last two weeks, they have been truly phenomenal. I think we have one left tomorrow, and that's middle school chorus. But we did the high school event last night, and last week we did middle school, middle school, and the week before that we did elementary. So it has been a marvelous holiday experience, and real credit goes to our music teachers. The other thing that I was, I just want to make you aware of is you now have the complete draft from administration on the strategic plan. Al said it was very, very long, and we knew it would be very, very long. But we also know that, we're not necessarily talking about it tonight. We'll bring it back up on the first meeting of the new year. And our goal would be to set out a plan so that the board can work through that package in a logical way. We're not going to just dump that on you and have you try to figure it out. But it's a lot there, and I know that there's a lot to consume. So we'll talk about that at length at the January meeting. In terms of the presentation that I gave last time in relation to helping our families understand the various religions in the holy days that are celebrated throughout the district, I did very successfully reach out to an interfaith group in Dover, and they were incredibly welcoming. In fact, I called the town manager, Todd Selig, and he came with me, and we had a great conversation. They gave me a couple of books to read, and I promised I would get the books back to Reverend Sue, and I will do that. But that work won't necessarily be done in conjunction with your approval of the calendar. I just wanted to let you know that was in play. I also wanted to ask your permission, this is generally something that we've done in the past when we have a lot of interest in a topic, and we've done it over the course of, you know, our seven years together, which is, there's a lot of interest in the K-5 World Language Program, and it shows up at budget season every year, and yet we don't have a real plan behind it. What I'd like to do is sort of like we did with the Orchard Drive Property Forma Group, with your permission, we'll do the research and figure out what the pluses and minuses are of putting a K-5 program together with the idea of having a report to you in the fall rather than constantly hitting this thing as kind of a hot potato, trying to put together administratively a plan. I obviously, you know, just want to make sure I have your support in doing that.
I would think it's a good idea as long as the understanding is that this does not indicate a commitment to have a K-5.
Yep.
You know?
No promises.
Yeah, this is not, this is not like we want to do this, and this is how, how could we do it? It's like, what are the, kind of investigate that, you know?
Maybe it would be helpful to have a specific charge for the committee.
Yeah, I think so.
Do you want to come back with a charge in January?
I think that would be reasonable.
Yeah.
Okay.
Because I think, obviously, you want to have, like, what's the cost of it? What is it? Because it's, because I think you'd probably have to get separate foreign language teachers because the current teachers probably aren't, couldn't integrate it, you know? They're not trained, maybe some of them are, but cost, what it does to the schedule.
I would just like generically say, what are the obstacles?
Yeah.
I mean, I hate to start out with a negative, but like, what things do you have to overcome to actually implement this?
Yeah. What does it do to the curriculum in terms of, because we've integrated a, you know, socio-emotional learning curriculum in the schools. We have the traditional core requirements. Then if this is, if this is, you know, added on, what does that make the day look like? If there are people, places that have dealt with that, kind of what does it look like? I think those would be some of the things I would want to say.
Will do. So I'll try to.
So how are other districts solved?
Yeah.
That question, what are considered best practices?
Yeah, and I think you did, I think, like, I think Todd was saying, you have schools that have like kind of exposure to languages, you know, or I think you might like learn something about the culture, you might learn some songs, you know what I'm saying? You know, in French and in Spanish, you know? But you may not be really learning the language to become fluent in the language. Todd, I mean, I don't, but it seemed like what you were saying last time is that some programs are kind of like that. So they have foreign language, but it's not necessarily foreign language that really builds real fluency and proficiency.
Right. Well, as I mentioned, about 25% of elementary schools have some form of a language program in them. Most of them are what you described, which is some cultural exposure, but it's really not necessarily aimed at language acquisition. In fact, I'm going to visit Rye Elementary, which is one of the ones that the community members mentioned after vacation, and that's the model they have. The kids have, have it once a week, and they have a teacher that teaches it, and it's a, it sounds like it's a lovely program and it works. Their kids do go to middle school, and at grade six, they make a choice, just like our kids do, about which language to study.
So I think the distinction would be like, do you learn language proficiency or is it kind of exposure and kind of a culture, kind of a cultural awareness model?
And then how does it fit into our broader, you know? Because again, everything we've implemented now has been more of a systemic approach that fits all the way through. So how does, how does adding it to the elementary then dovetail in with what is existing?
Right.
And perhaps specifically, is there a feasible short-term way to close the fifth-grade mandating gap?
Very good.
Okay.
Thank you guys.
So that could give you a charge.
That gives me a great start, and I appreciate it, and I'll come back with a little charge at the next meeting. And then finally, a meeting on Orchard Drive tomorrow with the committee. It's been a while trying to get him up and going, but we'll meet tomorrow.
Good.
How was the response from the chiefs on the request for?
It's interesting you ask that, because I haven't got a single response. So I guess I better call and find out. But those letters did go out.
About three weeks ago, I think.
Yeah, yeah. Not a boo, not a peep. So I'll follow up.
Anything else?
Nope, that would do it.
Okay. Business administrator?
Good evening. I've given you an update on the current year budget, just to show you where we stand as of the 14th of December. I'm not overly concerned. It looks like we're trending in the same pattern we do every year. Interestingly, we flip-flop, seems like we flip-flop every year between salaries and benefits. Benefits seem to be higher this year, salaries are lower. Nothing that I'm concerned over.
Are operating expenses usually at about 80%? Are they later in the budget, in the budget year?
Yeah, yeah. It's pretty typical where we are. I usually look at this time last year and compare and see if anything's out of whack, but not really, not really. Moving on to default budget, I've given you the first pass of that. Obviously, this isn't, we haven't set the budget number, but these are just some preliminary numbers, looking at a little different approach to default. There's been some legislation that's made us reconsider some of the ways we do it. You know, I mean, I can give you specifics on why we have some negatives opposed to all positives. I mean, obviously, the positives are collective bargaining agreements that, you know, require us to put those in there, special ed mandates. Some of the negatives are changes in position, so consciously we would change those to reflect what our current positions are and decrease the budget by those.
Can you explain that, Sue, just a little bit?
So in other words.
Just for the board to know that the default language in legislation changed very dramatically this past session.
Yeah. So in the past, one of the things we would do is, in terms of health insurance, if we knew that we had a 5.7% increase, we would increase everyone's health insurance by 5.7 increase and conclude that in the default. But now, anyone that's not in a collective bargaining agreement, we're not including that in there. So that's a small group of, you know, individuals that aren't under collective bargaining, that we have not included that in there.
So the impact that would be, their insurance still goes up?
Their insurance still goes up, we need to find the money.
Right. Which is sort of the, sure, yeah, exactly, Michael. I can tell from your look, it doesn't make any sense.
No, it doesn't, but that's been the.
And it doesn't make any sense.
No.
So this is, you know, this is one of these pieces of legislation from Concord where, you know, it was crafted by somebody who was upset with somebody, and, you know, then they craft this nonsensical language. So you have a commitment. For example, you know, the central office staff are not unionized. So all of their insurance will go up, just like everybody else's goes up. But if the budget fails, there's no money to pay the increase in their insurance. So what you'd be forced to do is rob from Peter to pay Paul, because you have to pay the insurance, so you'd have to go back into most likely academic accounts in order to pay your basic expenses. So that's one of the absurdities of the new law.
Right. The other one is any contracts that you have where, not in that position, but I know some school districts that have transportation contracts. The rumor is that you're not supposed to include that increase in there, even though transportation is required for grades K through eight. So you can include the increase for K through eight students, but you can include the increase for your other students. So how do you figure that out? We don't have that dilemma.
In a time when transportation, so I would say roughly 90% of the systems in New Hampshire use a private provider.
Right.
Barrington uses a private provider. So the costs for transportation are going up astronomically because there aren't drivers. So the people who own these companies can basically charge what they will, and I have colleagues whose transportation bills are going up 32% in one year. And so this.
It's a dilemma for them to figure out how best to represent that on the default budget. We don't have that problem, but they do. I mean, one of the things, too, that I always used to do, I just assumed that increases in utilities would be part of a default, and I shouldn't have been, so we've taken those out. So we've just flatlined that, and that's basically.
So it seems to me that in the past years, we've had a default budget that's been almost the same, and I think it's, well, seven years even higher than our budget.
Right.
But, and so that the consequences of a budget being turned down were minimized.
Right.
It seems like what we're in a situation where in now, is if our budget gets turned down, we're in trouble.
Well, I was gonna. In some places, yeah.
Well, I mean, you know, you're talking about.
Your rough number.
Your budget's like, if your budget's going up 3.5%, and this is like, less than 1% increase.
Right, yeah.
So that's, that would be a big difference to have to make up.
What is, I mean, I was gonna, I hated to push it because we haven't even actually finished the budget. What's the difference dollar-wise between the default budget and?
I didn't look at that, to be honest with you, because you didn't really have a budget yet, so I didn't want to assume that.
To be determined.
To be determined.
$1,360,000.
Yeah, did you just do the number? Yeah.
What was it, Michael?
$1,360,000.
Yeah, so that's a big chunk.
Yeah.
That would be a big consequence of a loss of.
It's everything except for the negotiated agreement, which is a separate warrant, right? When I'm comparing to?
Yes, yes.
Is there a difference between the default budget and the default budget?
As it stands now.
Ballpark.
Right.
From what it was, yeah, from what we're looking at two weeks ago.
But we'll revisit it at our next meeting.
That's, pass the budget.
Any other questions on that? And then I have Jim Rosicky here to talk to you about the capital plan.
If we think about the new rules, are there ways that we would structure the budget or agreements differently to reduce that impact in the future?
There's been some talk about that. Lots of districts are saying that they are going to put some of those contracts on a warrant, because if you have a warrant vote, then you can increase those, those numbers.
It gets kind of weird incentive to unionize, too.
Yeah.
It's like, why would?
That's true.
Yeah, it's true.
Doesn't it?
I mean, if you're not, if you're unionized, then the increase is covered, and if you're
not, it's not, so.
Or even on the utility side, could there be a utility contract that somehow rolled in an increase that, yeah?
We'll look into that, Michael, but probably the, you know, one of the other approaches we have is now that the legislature has changed parties, perhaps we can get language that would change this law. I think that's probably something that Tom could talk to the School Boards Association about when he's up at the school board meeting, talk about that issue. But we knew that this was going to be a nightmare, and it's turning out to be exactly the nightmare that everybody predicted. But you couldn't get people to understand that during the legislative process. They were fixated on it, and they were going to do it coming hell of high water.
Mm-hmm. Sure.
Thanks, Sue. Jim?
Capital plan? Do you have any other questions on the budget before we bring it back to you in January? Because we'll need a vote on what we're going forward with public hearing, so.
So we have to, we have to vote on the budget next?
Yeah, the one you want to go on.
Next meeting, yeah.
Next meeting, so.
So Jim's here as a direct result of our budget process, and we ran out of time to give him the kind of time he needed to present the capital plan as he saw it going forward. So, Jim?
Thanks. Good evening, board. Just wanted to call your attention, I believe it's in your board packet, for the updated facilities plan. I know it's deja vu for a lot of us because we spent so much time on it last year, and tweaks and changes following along with the Siemens proposal. So instead of going in depth and explaining everything again, I just would like to be brief, and as we go through it, the upper right-hand corner of the boxes per year are our target goals. As far as fiscally, this follows in line with the step up to bond plan that we presented at the budget time, or Dr. Moore stood. So it, our goal was to really put in $500,000 per year into the capital budget, and that's what we do here. Even though year after year, we seem to fall short on that particular target, that is still a goal of ours, and it's something to be aware of as we, as we go through the future. So as you could see, in year three, that number is fairly large. This far out, I'd like to just keep those projects in there as really just placeholders, just so everybody understands, like, this is what's kind of on the list as of right now. Numbers do change. These are estimates on the higher side, just so we're not caught off guard and see a huge gap below. But basically, as placeholders, has what needs are currently. Again, these are, this is really a living document. It changes as, as needs of the district change. Some things get pushed off, some things get brought up to the forefront pretty quickly. So as you could see, I'm trying to simplify it here and just give you guys really the.
What is DW, Jim?
District-wide. I don't know how to say a particular project that's applicable to all schools and all particular buildings, but again, I can probably talk this thing to death, so I'd rather have you guys just ask me questions, and I'll do my best to give the answers as I can.
Is the $1,193 what's in the current draft budget from two weeks ago?
No, that's actually this operating year.
Oh, sorry, that's the, okay. So what's in there right now is this, is the 1.9?
Year two is what, yes.
Okay.
So this is where we rounded up on. Obviously, our goal was $2,225,000. We're going to come in under that, just based upon what was approved and what is inside the budget for next year. I don't want to scare anybody, but as in year three, as you could see, that number, that $2,900,000 number of projects in there for next year, again, those are all projects in here that we're still, we still have to do a formal bid process. There is cost savings opportunities throughout each one of these projects individually. You know, I don't want to get too far ahead of, ahead of the plan, but we can certainly debate whether this stuff is still a priority or not. But this is obviously on the high side of all the budget numbers that I receive back from vendors and contractors as we look forward in these projects.
And the scary one to me is when you look at year five and year six. It's like, there's not, because there's not a lot of things on the list.
Right.
It's just the bond payments, and that's the worst-case scenario. But then you look at year seven, and it like drops off a cliff.
Right.
So can we survive those two years?
And then that's the reason we do this exercise, is to show you that in that particular year, we'll be in basically operational status. We'll be paying our bills, but we won't be having any major capital projects because the bond's kicking in.
One of the things that I wanted to bring up to your attention, and this is certainly something to chew on, but as far as the Siemens lease payment, the 418 per year, do you actually still want to include it in the capital plan? And the reason why I ask that is when we approved the previous pay-for-performance lease that we're currently paying now, next year it's up, we're paying $74,000 a year. We didn't really, we don't consider that a capital project or included in that number. So going forward, I mean, it makes things look a lot more affordable if we negate that 418 number. But again, that's something is, it's going to be kind of an operating thing within the next 10 years.
Right. So I think that goes, I'm going to capture something that you said earlier, Michael, during the budget process, and if I mischaracterize it, please step in. I think Michael was asking at the time, you know, what's the, what's the savings offset from the Siemens? And our answer at that point was, we don't know yet, because they haven't lived through the budget cycle, to see what the true impact is. And in the next cycle, we'll know what the true impact is, and we'll know whether we're getting the guaranteed savings that, that they committed to.
Right.
So I think at that point, it does make sense to, because we should be seeing the decreases in our utility cost, to have the conversation about moving it out of capital and into operation. So, you know, did I capture that right, Michael?
I don't, yeah, yeah. I guess, I think it should stay in here, though. That's, it was a financing mechanism to do capital projects. So we chose to spread it out, and we need to own that.
Okay. But we should see the offset in the operating.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Yeah, yeah, yeah. I don't think it's going to be that much, though. I think, I think, I think we're looking at like an 8% return on investment for that. So it's, it's going to be $30,000 or something like that.
And then add the $75,000 next year when our current lease is up and paid for, makes things a little bit more manageable within our operating budget.
So, yeah, I mean, I think, I think the jump of $1 million in year three is scary. But what concerns me even more than that is I am concerned that our working estimate for the middle school project is most likely light by a significant amount. And so I think when we get into years four and five, it's going to be more painful than this.
Can I ask, what was, what was the, I don't know if we've gotten that far, but what, what working number are you using for estimate for cost per square foot?
For the middle school or just everything?
Middle school.
Well, I don't have a number in my head, or nothing's coming to my mind, but certainly as we look at, like, another auditorium, like, these things are, in the package can really sway.
I'm not even, I don't know schools, I'm just like, I had this conversation.
$383.
Per square foot?
Yeah, 46 million divided by 120,000 square feet. There you go.
And so that's why I'm concerned, though, because of the comparables that Ron gave us, the only one that was below $400 a square foot was 2013, and the rest of them ranged from 436 to 485.
Well, I mean, I don't have school stuff, but I've, the other hat that I wear on the town side, what we've seen is a significant escalation in cost per square foot. So we're talking, one of the building owners downtown talked about a project he did five years ago, and it was $125 a square foot. Current estimate is $200 per square foot. It's, I mean, it's really, particularly over the last three years, there's been an absolute explosion in the cost of, of per square foot. So, I mean, I share what you're, I share the concern.
So Ron will be here on January 2nd, Michael, so we can probe that some more.
Hopefully, we're going to dig into that. The Dover cost per square, the Dover High School cost per square foot seems really low, and I'm interested in why, why that project was so economical.
I just said, this is probably something I just don't get, because like, in year five, you have the estimated bond payment, okay? In year six, you have the estimated bond payment, which is the same thing as year five, and then from then on, you just, you have it wiped it out, like, because it stabilizes. But still, we're paying it, right?
Correct.
But it's paid under the bond section of the budget, not the capital. We're building, we're carrying it here to account for it, because there's no bond. But once there is a bond, it shifts over to the same location in the budget that the highest, high school bond is.
When does the high school bond expire again?
22, 23, Sue?
I believe so.
22, 23.
And these bond estimates were based upon just running a scenario by breaking the bond into two, and the bond and lieu, I believe?
Yeah, I think we have to make some hard choices about things in the year three and four timeframe that need to be deferred. And I don't know how we want to go about doing that, if, want to handle that as an administrative activity, or if we want to workshop that with the board.
Absolutely. We'll, we'll, we'll carry through recommendations, and you'll see choices, and ultimately, you guys will end up saying, yes, we agree, or we'd rather you do this and not that, and that ultimately is within your purview. We'll come together with a package, and you guys will critique it, as always.
Are there other questions?
Thanks, Jim.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, Student Senate report?
Yeah. All right, so first of all, Christmas break. Friday's our last day before Christmas break, and the last week before Christmas break is always a mix because people want to slow it down and not do anything, but the teachers want to get things done before break comes around. So it's kind of a, a lot happening while people are, just want to sleep. Winter sports are in full swing. Most of them have had multiple games, matches, races, whatever. As was mentioned earlier, the high school holiday concert was last night. I wasn't able to go because I had a hockey game, but I heard that it was really, really great. And we had sort of a mini concert in the school today during flex time, so we got to get a little taste of what happened last night, which was really neat.
Very cool.
And like I had mentioned earlier, the Senate is working on, not really a club, a group that will meet to include, to make people's introduction into the school district as smooth as possible. So we're looking at what other schools do and what types of programs they have. Is it like mandatory? Is it just come as you please? Is it just these kids are allowed, things like that? So what we're looking towards is anyone that wants to come can come, so we can have a mix of people who have been here for a while, people who are new, and just what we would do during those meetings. Would it be during flex time? Would it be during after-school? Just, so we don't really have anything pinned down yet, but we're starting to work that out. And then, once we come back from Christmas break, we have two and a half, three weeks until midterms start. So that's already beginning to be introduced. Teachers are introducing preliminary ideas for final projects, tests, that sort of thing. Just like we did last year, we'll have three reading days before midterms. So there'll be three days without any summative assessments, where teachers are required to not have any summative assessments those days, and kids just have days for review[1789.95] not have any summative assessments those days and kids just have days for review or working towards their, their final or midterm. And lastly, during the holiday break, there's a basketball and hockey holiday tournament. Yeah, that's all I've got.
Great. Questions? Thank you. So Celeste, thank you for your patience.
No, no problem. Good evening. I was here about a month ago with my technology hat on. I have a different hat on this time, but I'm Celeste Best. I'm a science teacher here at the high school. And my partner in this, Lisa Zimanski, is, wasn't able to be here tonight conveniently. Her husband had, or her son had hockey practice in Massachusetts, and I think she volunteered to take him because she doesn't, she doesn't like public speaking, but she seems to have plenty of time to text me things, so. But Lisa has an alumni student from Oyster River, a daughter who is a senior, and another son who is a sophomore. And she's been very involved in a number of parent groups supporting the school and our students and staff throughout the years. So she is a great asset to us. What I'm here tonight to introduce you to with the blessings of Mrs. Philippone and Dr. Morris is this organization called Friends Forever International. And to give you a little bit of background on, they are a locally-based nonprofit. They actually, their businesses are located on Morgan Way here in Durham. And they work with youth from conflict-ridden regions around the world to empower young people to develop leadership skills, communication, collaboration, necessary to work towards overcoming and addressing that conflict and creating positive change in their communities. And some of the countries that they work with are Ireland, Israel, and the Ukraine. The purpose of looking to bring this program here, and I have to be honest, I'm really excited. I've never done anything like this before. But the amazing opportunities that this could give not only our students, but the staff in this building, all of our schools, and the community is really, really exciting to think about. And I'll kind of talk about how we saw that when they came here this year. The Irish group came to visit us for a few hours in the morning. But the hope to bring this group here is give our students, a select group of students, the opportunity to engage in really what is our 21st century learning skills, collaboration, team-building, communication, effective communication, leadership skills, and given a voice to make a change in something that they deem, this would not be driven by adults or the mentors, but it would be driven by the students and what they felt would be a community action that they want to take. So the mission and how it fits with Oyster River, as I just mentioned, you know, these are different words, but it's our 21st century learning skills that we emphasize here at the high school. Resilience, empathy, communication, the ability to make an impact, playfulness, and effort. And a lot of that team-building and work will come with the help of FFI for the group that is chosen to participate. And it's also going to involve their parents because there is a decent amount of fundraising that goes into that, and that's a huge component of building the team and deciding on what is an action project. You know, we are not like Northern Ireland, dealing with conflicts such as they do, but there are still things in our community that the kids have a heartbeat on that they are going to want to change. And I'm really excited to see what they came up with. I can't even begin to give ideas from my perspective, but I know that there are already kids who are involved with the Irish visit who are in my room, you know, saying, when is this going to happen? When are we going to start? What are we going to do? And I'm like, well, just, just give me a little while, just wait. And you can see there that, you know, communication is a focus here at the high school. It's always a conversation about students now. Can they communicate? Can they communicate on something other than electronics? And that's what a lot of the kids have been talking about, that opportunity to do something meaningful. This isn't about writing a paper. This isn't about giving a presentation. This is about being out there in the community and talking about change and, and moving forward with that change. Timeline, and Lisa has done a great, she's very organized, just like I am, so we work really well together. But she wears the, the social science hat and I wear the analytical hat, so together we cover all realms, which is really quite funny when we try to email back and forth to each other. You can see our timeline that we've discussed with Mrs. Philippone and Dr. Morris, and it's pretty extensive there. I'm not going to go through every piece of this, but we're in the phase where, here I am, I'm presenting to the school board. That was fall 2008. We were off by a mile a month, but winter is, I think, tomorrow officially, so it's still fall. We're okay. And then the next process would be to begin looking for our student group, and there'll be an application process for that. There are only 10 students allowed by the organization to be involved, five males, five females. And then there are three mentors, Lisa and myself, and then we are in discussions with one of our English teachers. I'm going to leave that person unnamed because I don't want to throw them under the bus. They haven't said yes yet, to, to work with us. And then we, once we have our group, we would begin our fundraising and our team-building and our collaborative work together. And then you can see it culminates with project, determining our project, project planning, collaboration with a cultural group from Ireland where we would have a cultural exchange and go visit them and see what their conflicts are, aid them in their presentation, and then they would also come here to work with us. So it would be 20 people involved. And, and I can tell you, when the kids that came here, we had opportunity to host them for about three hours one morning in October. And they met here in the library early in the morning, and the kids and their advisors were able to go off to whatever classes they wanted with some students that I had organized to be here. And I was really nervous about that. I've never brought an outside student body into this building during the day, you know, not knowing them at all. And it was one of the most wonderful experiences I've seen. I was fortunate enough to have two young ladies come into my forensics class, and they were very disappointed that they don't have forensics classes in Ireland. They have a very traditional education, and they jumped right in and were doing shoe prints around the room. And it became, I, I just sat down and started chatting with the kids. We all started talking to them. I know Patty, I think you were in a class. Mr. Hawley welcomed the entire group into his advanced world cultures class just to start to have a conversation. And then we had a reception here in the library, and we had some music, and all the kids started singing. And then they actually invited our, our students and the advisors to their kind of farewell. And I had a number of FaceTime videos coming to me that night because we had several students who went and said they had absolutely wonderful times. So even in that small period of time, it was a very beneficial interaction. Fundraising is a big component of this. The work with FFI with all of their guidance is expensive and I, it's need-blind in terms of the application, but I'm very, I feel very strongly that a student shouldn't have to pay an exorbitant amount to be involved if something that they're passionate with. So my goal is that the 10 students would be responsible, individually responsible for no more than $1,500. My goal is even less. This is something I would have greatly wanted to be involved in as a student, and my family's socioeconomic status would have precluded me from, from even that $1,500. And so I want to make sure that there is no student turned away just because they feel that they couldn't pay for that. So that's going to be a big part of our team-building, and it's going to be kind of all hands on deck. And that's going to be with students, a student meeting before application for, for kids who are interested, and then also a mandatory parent meeting. We want to be very transparently, everything out on the line of what this means if, if the student were to get chosen. And we would have kind of a waiting list also. So if a student or their family, something happens and they just can no longer take part, that, that we can fill that space. But I do not want to be, have money be a component that would eliminate a kid.
What's the big thing? Is the money a big part of the cost of going to whatever?
No, that's actually a very small component of it. It's the work with FFI. And, because they are going to provide space and their facilitators and their trainers, which is wonderful because I certainly could not do that along with everything else I do, provide that expertise to really get these students to gel as a group and to prepare to do an actual community action project. This is not about putting posters up and, and that type of thing. This is about making real change. And we have lots of conversations about, we want to have community events where the kids are leading. Informational nights, presentations at the Durham Library, you know, community, you know, coffee houses where the kids have an opportunity to talk about what they're doing, why they're doing it, and why it's important to them and to us. And that's going to take a lot of training that's, that's needed outside of what we can provide in a class or during a school day. And Spalding High School actually just, they're getting ready to take their trip, so they are implementing their action plan now. So we've been working very closely with their, I believe, vice principal in how they raised their money and how they've gone about things. Different demographic in Rochester from here, but at the same time, I think we have plenty of things that we can work on within our community for action projects. And we don't even know, we haven't defined that community yet. That'll be up for the kids. Is that in our schools? Is that in our building? Is it the seacoast? And, and that will be for the kids in the group to determine.
Celeste, we talked about this in my office. Can you talk to the board about how you're going to choose the 10 students since it is a maximum enrollment and you'll probably get three, four times that who are interested?
I hope so. I hope we'll get more, three or four times that. It's going to be an application project, process that obviously we've not started working on yet because we wanted to, to make sure we had board approval before we go any further. But it'll be an application process. You know, obviously, we're going to have students in good academic and disciplinary standing, that bar, you know, for example, with NHS, the bar is at a 3.5. It won't be that high because that's not necessarily what we're looking for. We're not looking for, you know, our top academically performing students. But we want students who can manage their schoolwork and also be a part of this group. We have conversations, it'll be an essay that they'll need to write, there'll be some character and leadership references that will be given. And we're talking about an interview, having kids come in and talk about what, if you could change something, what would you change and why? So it'll be a long process. We'll have several people in, involved in looking at those applications and helping us to make a decision.
You had conversations about extended learning opportunity credit?
We have. We've talked to Sean Peschel, and one of the things that we will probably do is fill out paperwork and use our flex time where this group will meet once a week and be able to get ELO credit for that. A big part, we have a lot of students that go a lot of places, and then, maybe it's because I'm the science teacher, I never hear about it in my classroom unless I happen to have a kid who went. I want this to be different. I want us working with our English teachers. And that's why we're trying to coax an English teacher to be one of our mentors, so that when we go on our trip, you know, are we, we've got a long plane ride, should we be reading some literature from Irish authors? Now, I'm the science teacher, we're going to go out and take a look at the ecology of an island and what does that mean? And I want the kids' video blogging information to come back here. And, you know, there will be a significant amount of work involved in it. And so, you know, determining that they get credit will actually be pretty easy to tie to standards and the amazing learning opportunities that they'll have. You can see, you know, it's identified a lot of the, the different services. The Irish group told us bingo. Bingo is big for fundraising, which had not crossed our minds. I don't know if that will be big in Durham, but maybe that population is here. We're not sure. So, you know, there'll be a lot of hands-on fundraising. And then it comes back to giving our kids, we have phenomenal kids. I've been here 22 years, and we have absolutely wonderful kids in this school district. To give them the opportunity to go that step further, that's not going to be hard. And like Dr. Morris said, I think they're going to be looking, knocking down my door to get in, and I'm okay with that. That's exciting. It's going to be a really hard decision. It is absolutely a hard decision. But the, I think watching them take this and run will be absolutely wonderful, and to give them that opportunity in this kind of framework is really, really exciting to, to expose and enhance that leadership and character that so many of our kids already have, and that chance to have that kind of experience that you don't necessarily always get in high school. That's all I have, because I know, I was told to...
The reason we wanted to take it before you is because it isn't the traditional field trip. It's much more comprehensive, and you had authorized me to approve field trips, and yet this one was so different in terms of its nature and its impact. I just wanted to make sure the school board was aware that we were going down this path and if you had any questions or any concerns, you know, so that we could address them going forward.
I just want to say, absolutely do an interview. Like, I know, especially like in college application season, I'm writing so many essays, and I feel like my only identifying factors are like how well I put words on paper and my grades. So like, absolutely, please, please, please do an interview for the, for the application.
Wonderful. Thank you for that input. I appreciate it.
Why Ireland and not one of the other?
Safety concerns. You know, parents are going to, for our first time, anyway, parents are going to be instilling the trust of 10 of their children in Lisa and my hands, and I don't want to enter into a situation where there is concern about safety. You know, and Israel is a very conflicted area of the Middle East. The Ukraine has just came, come on board, so they have had no US groups visit there yet. So both Lisa and I felt very comfortable about going to Ireland, and we're going to kind of see how that experience went before we envisioned anywhere else.
Brian would recommend Africa.
I was thinking, the Democratic Republic of Congo is a good one to start with, yeah.
Yeah. But the mom in me is like, let's, let's tread lightly and take little steps before we, we jump into other places.
So these are three countries that are actually recognized?
Yes. These are three countries that are recognized, and they have groups that, FFI exists all over the country. The home base is here in Durham. I'm not sure the history of that or why that happened, but they have schools all over this country that work with them, that travel and...
So this organization actually started in Durham?
It started in Durham. It started in Durham. Yep, they renovated what used to be a church right on the end of Morgan Way.
Right on Route 4.
Yep, it was right on Route 4, yes.
So I guess I feel, I feel like I'm being dense here, and it sounds conceptually great, but I don't understand what the students would actually be doing.
So they're going to determine a service action project that will take place, and then they're going to work to fulfill that project. Example, the only, obviously, we have not done that, so I can't give you a specific example for here, but in Rochester, what they did is the kids fundraised and purchased backpacks. And then in those backpacks, they filled them with a year's worth of school supplies for students within the district that had been identified. Along with that, they also put in vouchers for local restaurants, and if you know where Spalding High School is, it's right across from McDonald's. McDonald's provided a large number of vouchers to put to those kids, so similar on the lines of End 68 Hours of Hunger. And then they distributed those backpacks to hundreds in the Rochester school system, and that was their action project for their first year. They said it went overwhelmingly well and was really receptive, and the community was incredibly supportive of that. And so what their, what our action project will be, I don't know. Our kids have really big ideas and really great ideas, and so it's kind of exciting to see, you know, they're going to be driving the train. I don't want to drive the train. I just want to be there to help facilitate. And so I'm excited to see where that goes, because my brain goes somewhere else than I'm sure what theirs will.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Happy holidays, everyone.
Happy holidays.
Here we have a revision of the school calendar.
So we took the advice of the board at the last meeting, and the November day is moved to Friday. We took the third day at the beginning of the year and moved it into the spring, which would offer us the flexibility to capture days if we end up with a lot of snow days like the last two, two days, two years. Is that, those are the only changes, right, Todd? Yeah, so those are the results of our conversation at the last meeting.
Okay. If we could have a motion to approve the revised school calendar? Brian?
Motion to approve the calendar.
Move by Brian, second. Second by Al. Is there further discussion on this? Questions? I think the move to go to two, two days at the beginning is a good one from three. Hearing none? On favor, please raise your hand. Five in favor, the student rep in favor, the school calendar is approved. We've talked, we've talked about the strategic plan, and I just think that as you, as it's presented to us, what are the, you know, can it be boiled down, or there can be the thread, you know, the kind of, like, what is the basic argument of this strategic plan? You know, what are the key things? So that's presented, it's not tonight, but...
Right.
Because, I mean, there's so much stuff. What's, what's the key, the forcible directions of this plan?
Yep, we can capture that.
Okay. So the Arespa negotiations, I thought we'd have something on that tonight. Do we have?
Yep.
Okay.
So in relation, I don't mind talking about this in public because we follow the guidelines that the board gave us. You know, we added language into the new contract around progressive discipline, which is exactly what we do with the Teachers Guild, the same thing we do with the PARAs. So that language is consistent with other contracts. We added language on a sick leave bank, which is also replicative of what we're doing with the teachers and with the PARAs. We added language that allowed the group to meet at the beginning of the year. We added language that we would meet and... We added language that we would meet and inform the unit if we made any staffing changes. And we changed the probationary period from 30 days to 90 days, which was something both sides wanted, because the way it was working out, we could barely make a decision whether somebody was capable of doing the job in 30 days, and 90 days certainly gives us a much better handle on that. We limited the number of snow days that somebody could get paid for, it was unlimited before. We had four secretaries who had that benefit, we limited it to no more than five in a given school year. And we settled the pay issue at 3, 3.2, and 3.3, and that was within the guidelines the board authorized. So those are the major changes to the contract. I would say that, I also would add that the, it was a little bit longer than it has been in the past, not because there was any adversity or frustration, it was more getting to know a new union representative on their side and talking through various scenarios that actually occur in the district, and whether those scenarios made sense. In terms of working conditions, I would say that the dialogue between the board and the bargaining unit was very positive.
I would agree.
So they have voted, and they have approved it, and it requires a vote of this body to move forward as well.
Have a motion to approve the Arespa contract, Al?
Make a motion to approve the Arespa contract.
Seconded, seconded by Brian. Are there questions for Dr. Morris on the contract? It's clearly within the guidelines that we set, so. Hear the vote? All in favor, please raise your hands. Four in favor, all opposed. Abstentions? Motion to approve the Oyster River Middle School maternity leave of absence. Brian?
Motion to approve the leave of absence.
Moved by Brian, is her second. Seconded by Al. Discussion? All in favor, raise your hands. Five in favor, the student rep in favor, that's approved. Motion to approve the high school/middle school list of spring coaches and volunteers. Brian?
Motion to approve the middle and high school spring coaches and volunteers.
Moved by Brian, seconded by Al. Discussion? All in favor, raise your hands. Five in favor, the student rep in favor, those are approved. So we have two policies, motion for first read, instructional resources, and the student computer and internet. We have a motion to approve those two for first read?
If no one opposes it, I kind of just put them as a block. I'd like to make a motion to approve policy, I think that is IJ, instructional resources, and policy JICL, which is student computer use and internet use for first read.
Okay, this moved as a block, is her second, seconded by Brian. And I know that Denise, you know, in terms of attendance at policy meetings, it's usually Denise and Kenny are paying a lot of attention, and I'm not paying so much attention, so it might be good if we have, if we have them here, so if you have questions, they would probably be the ones to...
Do it in the second read?
Yeah, second read. So since this is just for first read, I think if we have questions, you could probably ask them in the second read. So ready to vote on these? All in favor of approving these two for first read, please raise your hand. Five in favor, the student rep in favor.
Can I ask a question about the policy committee meeting minutes?
Which one, Michael?
The policy committee meeting minutes that are...
Oh, the minutes themselves?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
I just, I think there's a typo in here, because policy IJ is listed twice, and the last one there is not IJ, it's something else.
Okay, thanks. Oh, we'll look at them.
Okay. Is that corrected?
Yeah.
Okay, school board committee updates. The building, the middle school building meeting met today, right?
Yes.
Yeah, so I wasn't there, but...
Yep, so what we did today was we took the work of the visioning workshop and began to articulate a vision mission statement for the new school. The architect Rangan Lamar will present that to the school board on the first meeting of the new year, January 2nd, and be open to any other conversation, like the questions Michael had earlier regarding where we are in the project and what the next steps are. And he met with the entire faculty tonight, and I had texted Jay at 4 o'clock, and they were still meeting, so it must have been a really good meeting.
So Wellness met, actually, our subgroup, which is cost containment, which I think we need to rebrand. So it's like, because when we were having the meeting, actually, we had representatives from Health Source come from their Wellness Committee, and we were talking about their plans, particularly, there's an assessment that you sign up, and you get money for signing up for the assessment. And the other thing is they do like biometric screening for the year that you feed into, and you get money for that. And then the third pillar really is that if you're going for healthcare, a procedure or something like that, they have a shopping program that allows you to, to look at what the actual cost is for different practices. And, you know, when we were sitting there talking, I mean, we, while we, it is the goal really to stabilize our healthcare costs and look at how to use our healthcare dollars more effectively, I think what we really are is like, is staff wellness is what we're talking about. And it was like, one of the staff members there is kind of eyeing me, because, you know, I'm like the management side who's negotiating contracts, but I think, you know, we have a focus on student wellness, and our focus on student wellness is that a student who's healthy is probably going to have a higher probability of academic success than somebody's not. And it's like, when we look at our staff, a staff member who's healthy is probably more likely to be effective than somebody who's not. So, so there's another component to it than just the actual cost. It's really trying to make our staff, look out for our staff, because we care for them, but also to try to make our staff more effective, if at all possible, by looking out for their health. So, again, I thought it was really interesting, and Todd and I think Teresa went to Merrimack Valley and kind of saw how they implemented it. So it's really trying to see how we can more effectively implement, can we get a higher percentage of people to actually do the biometric screening? Can we have a higher percentage of our staff really do the shopping program? Because all those things then do reflect back on, when we talk about how much our maximum payment is, that is all part of it. So it really is, it's kind of like where your mom telling you to do the things that you're supposed to do in terms of your yearly health checkups, A, so it's better for you, and B, it does have a corollary effect of making our healthcare more affordable. So I thought it was a really good meeting, I think it's a really great idea. And actually, ironically enough, I emailed Teresa today and I said, "Hey, wait a second, on the town side, we have a bunch of town staff, and this directly applies to them too, and we should share." I sent our minutes from the last meeting to Todd Selig and said, "Hey, you know, this is what we're doing, if you're interested, this is an idea that we're working on." So I think it's a really great idea.
It's interesting that you're bringing it up now, because there was recently an article put up on the Mouth of the River website about teacher stress that I thought was really interesting, because the kids are always just thinking about their homework assignments and never about how much the teachers go through to accommodate them, so...
We're trying to be holistic, we're trying to get like, I mean, really, the committee really is, it's split between that, there is the student wellness component, but we really have also focused on the staff as well, and that's what our group does.
And the Manifest Committee met?
The Manifest Committee met, it was the power of one to start, but fortunately, Dan came in and saved the day, and the manifest was examined.
Others?
Could I just add, Tom, that we have concept drawings of the Moheramit entrance in your packets, and we met with the Abenaki tribe, because the school is named after an Indian chief, and we were asking for how we could legitimately incorporate images and words into the new entry to Moheramit like we did at Massway around seafaring. So they were incredibly thrilled to be there. David hosted the meeting in his office, and his roundtable and six people pretty much explained why we needed a new office, because there was no room in the inn. But this, this concept is beautiful, and Jim is working with the same architect, Steve Blatt, that we did on Massway, and refining these so that Andre Bowen can go out to bid. So this is an $855,000 project, it's just the front entry, and we'll have a $100,000 grant to support it from the state.
Public comment, I think the public has vanished. So we have the list of all the future meetings, and we'll go through all those, so could we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion adjourned.
Moved by Brian, seconded by Al, all in favor? All in favor, student rep in favor? We're adjourned.